Hello, and welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council Standing Committees Meeting for Wednesday, September 4th. My name is Chris Dodson, and with us today is Nick Miller, our Sign Language Interpreter. Due to the length of today's agenda, please go to the Legislative Information Center via the City Council website to read the bills that are up for preliminary vote. You can find the link in the business dropdown on the city's PittsburghPA.gov website. Click Legislative Information Center. From there, click the red launch button. This will take you to the council meeting calendar. Find the meeting for today's date and click on Agenda. The meeting agenda should open with all the bills for discussion today. Thank you, and have a wonderful day.
Okay, good morning, everyone, and welcome to this pre-agenda meeting. It's not a hearing, it's a pre-agenda item, let's just say. We are going to interview Ms. Ethel Johnson this morning, who has been appointed to serve as a member of the Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Board. And I am Councilwoman Kraus. I'll chair this morning's interview. We are joined by Councilwoman Harris, and I believe Councilman O'Connor is on his way out. So our first order of business will be to have the clerk read the purpose of Bill 1925.
Bill 1925, Resolution Appointing Ethel Johnson to Serve as a Member of the Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Board for Term to Expire, April 30th, 2020.
There, thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I call you Ethel? Is that okay? So Ethel, welcome. It's a pleasure to have you here. I'm going to ask if you would, please, just tell us a little bit about yourself, your background, and we'll probably have a question or two for you.
I'm sorry. Nervous.
Please don't be, you're fine.
My name is Ethel Johnson. I'm the mother of three children, I'm the grandmother of eight, great-grandmother of four. And I have a 93-year-old mother whom I have to go try to visit and try to get her back to Pittsburgh, but she refuses to come. I attend Jerusalem Baptist Church in the West End. I serve on the usher ministry. I graduated from Langley High School, and I lived in Broadhead Manor from 1968 through the flood of 2004. I've been active on the various committees. At the Head Start Program, I had two children in Head Start. I worked under Broadhead Tenant and Resident Council. I was in the Ferrywood Citizens Council, Metropolitan Tennis Organization, and now I'm representing residents in scattered sites under the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh. And I helped choose some of our houses that we live in from after the flood. I helped do that. And I love watching TV, a little bit of bowling, spending time with family, talking on the phone with friends. And I am concerned about the needs of low-income, disabled, homeless residents. I feel that we all need safe, decent, sanitary, and affordable housing. And I'm humbled that I was -- an honor that my name was submitted to sit on the Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Board under the URA Board of Directors. That's what I wrote down.
Oh, well, I think you're going to be a perfect fit. I love the simplicity of your resume. It just tells us a lot about just who you are as a person. Where's your mom?
She lives in three miles from Steubenville, Mingo Junction, Ohio. I have to go out there tomorrow to take her to the doctors.
Yeah, that's...
And I have to get someone to take me to that.
You know, my mom just passed recently, and she was 86. And we tried, you know, to sort of wrestle her away from her familiar way of life and, you know, and come with us. It was very difficult. She was very set in her ways and very much loved her life and where she was and wanted to continue that way.
Right.
That's a challenge.
It is. She has dementia.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Broadhead Manor. I used to have a really good friend that lived there, and she would have lived there during the time that you were there. Does the name Avis Smith mean anything at all to you?
Avis Smith.
I worked with her at the top of the Triangle Restaurant, probably in the mid-'80s.
Avis Smith.
Yeah.
The name doesn't sound familiar. I probably knew her in passing, but I don't remember her being on that.
I lost touch with her. And she was just a great human being. I just loved her. And I, after I'd left her, I just never really knew what happened to her, where she might have gone. That's all. Thought maybe, you know, you might have crossed paths with her. Councilwoman Harris, would you like to ask Ms. Johnson some questions?
Sure. I believe Teresa must have brought you aboard.
Is that who did this?
I don't know. I'm asking.
I don't know. I was surprised when Denise Chapel called me and asked me about a bio, but I was half asleep when she called me, so I didn't know what I had said to her, so I just jotted some of the things down that I done.
Perfect.
So you know Stanley Lo?
I knew Daniel Petrogalo. I came on board when he was Executive Director of Housing Authority. We lived in Broadhead, and I saw things being done in various communities, in certain communities, and I wondered why we weren't getting things done in Broadhead. And I was told because we didn't have their representation. And at that time, I started coming to the board meetings, pre-board meetings. They were called pre-board meetings back then, to those meetings downtown. And I was a member of the Tenant Council, Secretary, whatever.
Petrogalo. Was he under Caligari?
Daniel Petrogalo.
Was he under Caligari?
He was, I believe he was before Caligari.
Flaherty, because I remember, yeah. Wow, you brought her old name back.
Daniel Petrogalo, David Washington.
Was a leaper? No, he was URA, I think, at that time. So, trying to make you a little bit comfortable before the big questions.
Oh, goodness.
Were you there when there was the big upset, moving the students from Schaefer to West Side?
From Schaefer to West Side? Or from West Side to Schaefer?
No, it was the other way around, Schaefer to West Side. Can't remember.
I don't remember. I know we were fighting, they were fighting about moving the children, closing Ferrywood School, but I don't remember them moving children.
Yeah, it was after Ferrywood was closed.
Oh, after Ferrywood was closed.
And then they were reopening it. They brought Ken Barbara over.
No, I guess I was over on the North Side at that time, when, after the flood, is it '04? Is this in '04? After '04?
Uh, yes.
Okay, well, see, when we were in the flood, I was transferred to North Side.
Oh, okay.
Presley High Rise. And then I wasn't over on that side. I got back involved when we were buying the house, they were buying the houses for the flood victims.
Okay. Okay. What do you think you'd like to serve on this council?
I was reading, reading, I was given the bios, whatever, the other day when I came to a meeting that I wasn't sure where it was, at 200 Ross Street. And I'm interested in the fact that they are looking now for all people, low-income, affordable housing renters, homeowners, and I'm very interested in helping the low-income people be a part of that process, you know?
Let's hope that's what happens this time.
Disabled people, you know, because I'm disabled, so, and homeless residents. I don't want more people to become homeless because of all the new developments and not being able to live in the houses, dislocated. How are you saying?
Well, I guess I'll let Cory ask you a couple of questions. Thank you for your willingness to serve.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I really don't have any questions. I think, you know, you mentioning homelessness, and that's going, could be an issue. I mean, when we see prices rise in different areas, I think, you know, we have to be, on that board especially, just, and I think you have the experience to do this, I was listening on the way in, just to be aware of, you know, spreading the money around so that, you know, there's opportunities for people to live in all neighborhoods across the city of Pittsburgh, and I think that's really important.
Yes, I think so.
But I think knowing that you were at the Housing Authority, you understand the background as to what the Housing Opportunity Fund should be and what we hope it will be in the future. I think it's great that you're willing to do this, so thank you for your willingness to serve on one of our boards. Thank you.
I tried really hard. My phone won't cooperate. I was trying to look up when Dan Petrogalo was in...
He was in the, it was in the '70s. He was here in the '70s.
He passed in '13.
Oh, he did? I didn't hear that he had passed.
He passed in '13, but the Post Gazette will not cooperate and allow me to get in. He served for the, as the Executive Director for 12 years. His name is on one of the buildings, is it not, in Carrick? Isn't that Petrogalo? The building in Carrick? I thought it was. And, uh... See, Madam Clerk, this is why we have such an amazing clerk.
I don't know how to work those things, so I'm glad I'm not the only one.
You're not alone. Oh, wait a second. It's asking me to send flowers. I think it's a little late to do that. Dan Petrogalo, Post Gazette, let's see. Yeah, here we go. So he did, he passed in '13. He was the Executive Director of the Housing Authority for 12 years, starting in 1977, so that would have been '77 to '89. That would have been under Caligari, right? It would have been under Caligari. And...
I thought he started under Flaherty.
I thought he started before Caligari.
Yeah, he could have, because this is mentioning that, they have a quote here from a gentleman named Bruce Campbell, who was the Executive Secretary to Pete Flaherty. So it sounds to me like he could very well have been there under Flaherty. Came from Highland Park. Uh, let's see. I'm going to see if I can find...
Danny, can you read it?
He went to Central Catholic Councilman.
Oh, I know, you guys don't know Danny? Danny was a good guy.
I know the name very well. I don't know that we, he and I had ever crossed paths, but I thought I might find in here that the building...
Billy, there's a whole, there's a bunch of...
Might have been, and Carrick might have been named after him, I thought it was. But yeah, so there you have it. Well, his obit is really long. Yeah, but it won't let me in. Tells me that I don't have an account, see.
I know he was Executive Director when I first started coming down to the meetings.
Yeah. Okay, if there's anything else from you, Councilwoman? Okay, Ms. Johnson, I can't see any reason why you won't have unanimous approval to your appointment to the Housing Opportunity Advisory Fund Board, Fund Advisory Board. And it was a pleasure having you here this morning. Thanks very much for coming in.
Thank you for having me.
So with that, I'm going to recess. Right? Good morning, everyone, and welcome to this Standing Committee Meeting of Pittsburgh City Council for today, Wednesday, September 4th, 2019. Our first order of business is public comment. Anyone wishing to speak before City Council this morning will have three minutes in which to do so. We would like to take this time to remind you that the rules of council are clear when they state that comment is limited to matters of concern or official action, which are at this time or may at another time come before this council. We ask that when you come to the podium, you begin by giving your name and the neighborhood in which you reside for our public record. The green light will indicate the start of your three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you'll have one minute to summarize your thoughts. When the red light comes on, your time will have expired. May we have our first speaker, please? May we have our first speaker, please? Good morning, Mr. Ludwig.
A pleasure, Mr. President. My name is Les Ludwig. I live at 6589 Rosemore Street in Squirrel Hill. There's two words, two words that tend to explain where we're at today in the bigger scene of the national problems. And those two words are common sense or the lack of it. Is it time, and I've presented this before, the bar graph that shows that in 2009, 49.5% of the electorate wasn't filing and wasn't paying any income tax. We need to make a change to a system where everybody, rich or poor, pays something to the great upkeep of our country, and we're not doing it. Instead, we allow 700 and some pages of regulations to provide places to hide money. It isn't going to work. We're going to have to pay for it yearly at some point. And you'll say, "Well, what's the big deal? They're not paying. They're poor, so we're helping them out." No. When you reduce it to dollars, it's $37 trillion that's going uncollected, and therefore, the city of Pittsburgh isn't getting its cut of the pie, which the federal government should be giving us, because it wasn't collected in the first place. I'm not saying that there isn't relief due from taxation, but it's certainly way out of hand when our current president raises the amount from $25,000 to $26,000 to exclude payment. So therefore, I think it's high time that we face the issue and can him, get him out of there. He's making a mess out of our country. The other thing is ethnicity. No one chooses their ethnicity. We're born into it. We grow into it. We get educated in it. So it's a world at home, and when we walk out the door, suddenly, we're in a different world. The world of the United States of America and not the divided states of America. The problems of 250 years are showing up where? Death on the streets of our great country. I thank you. We have to change.
Next speaker, please.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Beltsilver and Homewood, Global Intelligence Society Candidate for President 2020, globalintelligencessociety.org. July 2019 is the GIS-sponsored Latinx American Intelligence Month. Call attention to Dr. Juan Malachina, an Argentinian-American physicist and immigrant, born in Buenos Aires. Black hole information loss, no, which was against talking. This is one of the most important discoveries, most important papers I'm going to tell you about in a moment, in 20th century science. It's in the Mathematical Physics Journal, Volume 2, number 231, 1998. I think that Malachina is a true stable genius, Trump a false one. Citizens, do you think that anybody around this table, any of your councilors, are stable geniuses? Unstable geniuses? Geniuses? How about Mr. Paduto? A concern of council is local security. 2017 to 2019, I have asked district representatives for response to a number of issues that have to do with local security, and the response ultimately goes to the President of Council, PCC. Is there a chemical nerve agent VX in Pittsburgh? No response, NR, PCC competency zero out of 10. Two, is there U235 in Pittsburgh? District Representative 8, Strasburger, PCC physics competency, NR zero out of 10. Is there bio-gen, CRISPR work being done in Pittsburgh? District Representative Strasburger, PCC competency, NR zero out of 10. Are there self-reproducing nanobots in Pittsburgh? DR Strasburger and Lovell, PCC competency, NR zero out of 10. That means no response, no telephone, no text, no email, no post-mail response from the people who are on this council about these issues that have to do with local security and that our police officers have to deal with on the front lines, with or without any protection. And I advocate that no officer, no police officer in the city of Pittsburgh be told to go into a building without protective gear, without hazmat suits. There are others. There are many others that have to do with local security to which this council has not responded, not just by me, but by other people. And it's a completely irresponsible position that you're putting us and our police officers in.
Next speaker, please. Good morning, Ms. Brown.
Good morning. My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in the Hill District. I want to read something that I think you should listen to, because I think as council, you forget these type of things. You become a council person, and that means you make the rules, you say how they should be, you won't listen to us, where we're living it. That's why I keep coming, because we're living what you're putting us through. But anyway, our lives begin to end the day we become silent about the things that matter. Understand, that's why I keep coming. You disrespect me, my grandchildren, but I keep coming. God provided me with, listen to this, God provided me with the strength I needed to act at precise time when conditions were ripe for change. I am thankful to God every day. He gave me the strength not to move. You know who said that? Rosa Parks. I'm going to act like Rosa Parks. I'm going to keep coming. You know what, Mr. Kraus? I want you to understand something. There was one time when I was talking about the little boy in school who was being attacked by that guard. The council people, men, threw their chairs at me while I'm speaking, and they walked out. My son called. When he called, I bust out crying. I said, "I'm tired. I'm tired." All while I'm saying this, he's saying, "Mommy, mommy." And I said, "Tired? They disrespect me." He finally said, "Mommy." I said, "What?" He said, "Someone must do it." Do you know, I walk down this hill sometimes, I'm crying, and I'm praying. I pray, I pray, because I'm speaking for the people, and it shouldn't be that you don't hate me, missed the message because you hate me. Do you understand? We are being killed. We are being killed. And I want you to understand why I keep coming another time. When you hear that gardener was saying, "I can't breathe," my son was saying, "If I could only breathe, if I could only breathe." And they left him on the floor. They left my son and said, "If the troublemaker start any more trouble, call us." My son was crying for his life. He was saying, "I got one lung." Understand, he had two. He knew he was going to die if they left him on that floor. He begged for his life. He begged. He cried.
Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing no other speaker, we'll go to the rule call. We ask the clerk, please, call the rule.
President Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lovell. Mr. O'Connor. Mrs. Kael Smith. Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Six members present.
All right, we're going to go out of order today, requests. We were going to go to first, I think it's page five, five, four? Okay, four. It's Public Works, it's the Public, it's the Public Safety Committee, and on my agenda, I think it's page seven. Yeah, page seven. Page seven, Mr. Lovell is the Chair, Public Safety Committee. We have a new paper. Yeah. Oh, the page, 1954, 1954, where's, I'm sorry, maybe I'm doing this...
The first one is under Law and Finance.
Okay, the first one, that's what I'm trying to find, where the first one is.
It's on page three, it's 1947.
All right, got, well, okay, I have it in this word. I have the first one, 1954, 1970, then 1947.
Yeah, 1954 is on page seven.
Page seven. Okay. Page seven, Public Services, Mr. Lovell is the Chair. Read the paper, please.
Bill 1954, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Public Safety to Enter on Behalf of the City into a Professional Services Agreement with Wright Academy LLC for Services in Relation to Police Leadership Training Activities at an Overall Cost Not to Exceed $39,520.
Need a motion, Mr. Lovell.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Any conversation? Ms. Harris.
Yeah, what number is that on your seat?
We are, we are 1954, page four...
I don't have it.
Page seven, I'm sorry. Keep saying page four, because I wrote page four down. It's page seven. Page seven on the agenda, 1954...
First bill at the top.
First bill at the top.
Okay.
Any conversation? No conversation? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay. That takes us to the next bill in order that they've asked for, is on page 10, under Innovation, Performance and Assets Management Committee. Mrs. Strasburger is the Chair. We're going to take out of order Bill 2019, 1970.
Bill 1970, Resolution, Amending Resolution Number 456 of 2015, Authorizing an Amendment to the Existing Rooftop License Agreement Between the City and 600 GS Prop LP at a Cost, in Order to Extend the Term Through May 5th, 2023, at a Cost Not to Exceed $228,559.49.
I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Need a second.
Second.
Any conversation? No con... Ms. Harris.
Yes. What's this for?
Dan Shack is here to speak to this.
If you come back, come forward.
Hi, Dan, good morning. Welcome. Good morning. Dan Shack, Manager of Public Safety Technology. Your question?
What is this for?
So this is the rooftop agreement for the citywide camera project. On top of the USX, we have a raise for this. We previously passed this. This is just to extend it for an additional five years, no cost increase to the monthly rent. It's $2,406.86 a month, and that is the same for five years.
Okay, thanks.
Ready? Thank you.
Stand.
Any other conversation? No other conversation? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay. That takes us to, I believe, page three, Financial Law, which I am the Chair, Bill 1947.
Bill 1947, Resolution Authorizing Pursuant to Chapter 210 of the City Code, the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to Accept a Donation from Highmark Health Allegheny Health Network of Trauma Gaws, tolling at estimated value of $22,000.
Need a motion or proof?
Second.
Second. Any conversation? No conversation? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay. All right, we're going again out of order. We have Chief of Staff Gilman here. We do not want to keep him here long, and so we're going to go to page 10 on the agenda and the Innovation, Performance and Assets Management Committee. Ms. Strasburg is the Chair. We have a new paper.
Bill?
It is Bill 1969. She will read it in a minute.
Bill 1969, Ordinance, Amending the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title I, Administrative Article 11, Human Resources General Provisions and Title IV, Public Places and Properties, Cable Communication, in Order to Remove the Pittsburgh Cable Communications Advisory Committee and All Mentions in City Code.
Need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. I just, before we begin conversation, I just want to note that in her absence, the Chair of this committee, Mrs. Strasburg, does support this, does support this. So who made the motion? I'm sorry.
I did.
You have the floor.
I don't have any questions. I spoke with the Councilwoman this morning. She is in favor. She has met under due diligence on the bill and is supportive, as am I.
Ms. Harris.
Good morning, Dan.
Good morning, Dan Gilman, Chief of Staff, Mayor Paduto.
Hi. Do you want to tell me what this is for?
Sure. The Cable Advisory Commission was put into code in the 1980s when cable TV came around. The commission has not had any members or met in over five years. The commission has not had any members or met in over five years because, just bluntly, people didn't really want to serve because the era of cable TV had changed and the powers that that commission had with the cable companies had changed so greatly because of both the federal changes that took away local authority over cable and just the change in the cable networks, lack of traditional cable in homes, moving to things like satellite and the other technologies. And so the commission hasn't met or truly served a purpose. However, they do have some functions in code, and Controller Lamb caught them in some of the audits appropriately, particularly around the cable franchise agreement, which will be negotiated and brought before council in the coming months for a public process with council. And so it was decided we had to either find people and cede it so they could do it or decide that it really was an out-of-date function. And talking with the committee chair and the Director of IMP decided it was really an out-of-date function.
Okay. I know at least one person died that was on that commission, so.
Many years.
Will we be, will they come to council first? Is that how it's going to work?
The franchise agreement? Yes, absolutely, that would go to city council for approval.
Okay. Not so we have to spend an hour. Would we be doing a separate meeting for that?
Well, we could certainly do post-agendas. At least when I was on council in the past, a lot of it was executive session since it was a private negotiation. But we could do executive session, post-agenda, public hearing, whatever council wants, and certainly council would have to approve a franchise agreement.
Okay. Do you know the reason why? Because it was supposed to be one person per each, each council district on there, and I'm not sure anyone had stated that we needed somebody in District One.
I can't speak for council. And my council members weren't appointing. I can only, I'll speak personally from when I was a council member. I can't speak for others, but nobody had been appointed. And I will say, when I was a council member, I tried a number of times and continually was turned down because nobody wanted to give the time to come downtown at night and have a meeting that really didn't serve a function anymore. But as for other districts, I can't speak to that. But there hasn't been anyone appointed.
Okay, so you don't believe that there's any function that a committee would serve?
Not on cable TV, no.
Okay. And the council would be able to make those decisions?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
I was just going to say, I think I was one of the last people to appoint somebody. It was Steve McIsaac, and he had actually called me and said he felt that the whole process was pretty useless. So I'm glad that we're not wasting time doing this. But I will say, I think a public hearing or something like that might be more appropriate when it comes time for the franchise agreement.
Absolutely.
Any other conversation? Seeing no conversation, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose is nay.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, council.
Okay. That brings us, we'll stay in this committee. Let's get, let's exhaust this committee. We, seven, 1972, next paper.
Bill 1972, Resolution, Amending Resolution Number 526, which authorizes the city to extend a professional services agreement with STR Grants LLC for software services relating to the E-Properties Plus Profiling System by a term of one year at an additional cost not to exceed $31,951.11.
A motion to approve.
Need a second.
Second.
Any conversation? No conversation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose is nay. Next bill, please.
Bill 1973, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Finance to Enter into a Maintenance Agreement with Opex Corporation for Maintenance Services Related to the Falcon Red Document Scanning Workstation. Total Cost Would Be a One-Time Payment Not to Exceed $10,330, with Three Additional Option Years, 2020, 2021, and 22.
Need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Need a second.
Second.
Conversation, Ms. Harris.
Morning.
Welcome.
My name is Narita Blanco, I'm Operation Manager for Finance.
Okay. Do you want to tell us about this?
So this is a maintenance service for our Opex, I'm sorry, for our scanner. And our scanner is the one that manages all our mailings and image them so that we can then post and send the electronic deposit to the bank. When we purchased this scanner, we were under warranty until April, and now we need to have a service that will take care of service call, repairs, and any configuration changes that we need.
Is this something that our printing office should have too?
I'm sorry?
Is this something that our print office, they've been losing equipment year after year? So would that be something that they would need to use too, or is this just for finance?
This is, this is just a scanner, but there's a software that is, you know, part of the process.
Right.
And it has the capability to extend the services to other departments. So like, one of the things that we would like to see in the future is like departments like Fire that gets a really, you know, large mailing at the beginning of the year, that we'd be able to create something to be able to speed that process. The main goal of this is to, you know, support the electronic deposit into the bank and not doing all that paper trail that takes a while for the, for the deposit to clear.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other conversation? No conversation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose is nay. I'm going to use the chair's privilege for just a moment. Are you, are you leaving the room?
Yeah.
I need six for a minute. All right, which is why I'm going to do this now. Mr. Lovell wants to introduce a bill that was supposed to be introduced yesterday, but the Budget Office didn't have it prepared by accident, and it should have went in yesterday. It'll go in, it's, won't be discussed till next Wednesday. But in order to do that, I need six votes. I need a motion to suspend the rules.
I'm moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose is nay. Mr. Lovell?
Yeah. Most, the bill was actually in front of members of council. It's bill numbers 2012 and 2013. There's actually, they're accompanying pieces, so motion to introduce 2019, 2012, and 2013.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose is nay. Okay, it'll be introduced, it'll stand, it'll be on Wednesday's agenda as if it was introduced yesterday. That exhausts the, thank you very much, exhausts Innovation, Performance, and Assets Management. I do see the Director of Public Works here, so I will go to the Public Works Committee next, which is Mrs. Smith is the chair, and I have to find it. It is on page seven. We have a deferred paper.
Bill 1909, Ordinance Supplementing the Pittsburgh City Code, Title I, Administrative Chapter 156, Creating a Clean Sweep Division Within the Department of Public Works in Order to Oversee and Improve the Maintenance of Vacant City-Owned Properties and to Formalize the Status of the Division.
Need a motion, Ms. Smith?
Motion to approve.
Need a second?
Second.
Any conversation? No con?
Yes. Can we have the director come to the table? Good morning, Director. Could you give us a synopsis of what this is? What this is?
Well, I believe it's, you and I discussed about creating, I guess, a division to address vacant lots around the city, like previously was done by the Redup crews.
So I'd like to make sure that we're still working on this a little bit because I want to make sure that what we're doing when we cut the lots, we're not just cutting the lots, that we're replanting them with something that's low growing, grass, or some ground cover. So we're not doing the same lots over and over and over again and just giving money to a nonprofit or costing the taxpayer money for something that could be done once and last much longer. So I'd like to make sure that we're addressing that. So I'm going to, I'm going to hold this for one week until you and I can have a conversation.
Sure. There's a lot to talk about in terms of creating a division or it isn't a snap of the fingers and makes it happen. There's a lot of work to do with the unions and scope of work and all that. So I, I agree with the concept, but there's a lot of things to talk out, but haven't talked through.
And we want to make sure that we include, I apologize, this is the legislation I put in, I'm sorry. But we want to make sure that, I don't have my glasses, so we want to make sure that we put in the, that we're also addressing the blighted properties because that, it's making me sick what people are living next to. I mean, none of us would want to live next to a property with the overgrowth and disgust that some of our residents live with every single day. And then we're, we've changed the way we address animal care and control in the city, so they're living with rodents, they're living with animals coming in and out of these homes, they're living with the weeds, and we can't even sit in their backyard to enjoy. And yet we sit here and our yards are cut, yards next to us are cut, and I mean, it just makes me sick that residents are living like this. So we have to do something to address those properties. I don't care what it is, they don't live like this in other parts of the city, in the county, and in other places, find a way to do it. So before, we had a crew that would go out and clean up the vacant properties, and I'm hoping that we can create something that would just do that. Go out, clean the properties, lean, lean the property, or do whatever you can legally like we did before, but that it's much more, that we can handle many more properties than we did in the past because, and it's, it's citywide. It's not just isolated to one neighborhood or one area, but, I mean, nobody should have to live next to this. I don't care what neighborhood you live in, I don't care, you know, what your property looks like. If you're cutting your grass and the house next to you is deplorable, I mean, it's just, it's a public health concern. And I mean, it really contributes to this whole, the broken window theory. I mean, I really think it, you know, there's a lot of things going on. So anyway, it just makes me sick. I want to make sure we're addressing the private properties and the lots both in a way that we haven't done before.
Sure, and we agree with all that. You know, in fact, yesterday, we had a meeting with PLI and others. There are a multitude of entities taking care of lots. It's URA, it's the city.
Yeah. And I did see that you said something about everybody coming together to work on it.
Yeah, it's, it's gotten a little complicated because some of the money that used to be in our budget is now in finance, so you have another hand in the matter that's taking care of lots.
So maybe we need to take the hand out of so many places and put it in one central place so that we're addressing these in a way that, that the residents don't have to wait. The entire process is ridiculous. Right now, we thought, thought we were speeding it up when we sent it to PL and I. PL and I would send it to you if it was a clean and lean property, and then you would send out your crew. But that process still takes too long. If you're living next to weeds and, it's just too long. And I just want to, I mean, honestly, my husband goes out and cuts, cuts down places for people and, but there's just way too many in our district, and I can't imagine what's like citywide. But I think I saw somewhere, there's like 20-some thousand vacant lots. That's just the lots. That's not even the housing that we're dealing with. And I can't imagine your crew having that many. I think we really have to hire more people so that.
I would agree. I, I mean, the previous group that did it, it was created by, at the expense of the divisions by drawing personnel out, and the other neighborhoods and communities suffer as a result of it. So if we're, we're going to make this happen, it's got to be with the additional resources to do it.
Additional, absolutely. And I think this is a priority to the city, to the residents of the city. And so I think if we're going to talk about, you know, technology and things that they, they really don't care about, to be honest with you, most, I mean, a lot of them don't. It doesn't affect their everyday life, but this is their quality of life. It affects their quality of life, and these are the things that residents want to see us addressing, the things we are responsible for doing, the things we are, we should be taking care of. So this is what I'm, so it's my goal to make sure that we're addressing those.
Yeah, and in our conversation yesterday, you know, we were talking about the collecting, you know, the clean and leans, where it's not been very successful in the past, and I'm hearing that there's actually been some good recovery there. Then the whole tent behind that was if we could recover the money, we could actually hire more people.
Yeah, to pay for it.
To, to do that, so.
But there's a cost associated with not doing it, and that's that, people don't want to live in our neighborhoods when they have to live next to this. So.
Given the resources, we can, I guarantee you, we can certainly do it. No doubt about it.
Okay. And I want to make sure we hit the resources because it's a priority to me, to our residents.
Sure.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Yes. Is this, what, what will this clean sweep do that Redup didn't?
I can't speak to that just yet. I, it is the creation right now of Councilwoman Kail Smith, and we still have to have that conversation. I believe that, from what I'm hearing, it's the same as what Redup used to do in beautifying the lot, and hopefully in the end, that something else is done with that lot, build a structure on it so it isn't a vacant lot anymore.
Can I just clarify real quickly? This is, I put in the legislation, but all of council and the administration is, we're all going to work on this together. It's something we all want to see happen, so I just want to make sure I say that. Sorry.
I mean, once we talk this thing through, we can certainly come back with the defined scope of work and how many, I mean, right now, I don't know how many people we're talking about. There's a lot of things to discuss. So, you know, I support it. We've talked about this before in our, in our regular meetings, and it just, is it going to take some time in order to do it? If I had to do a bid, that takes a while to do that. You've got to work some things out with the union, et cetera. All those things are not obstacles. They're all workable, but it's a process, and so.
Yeah, I mean, before, we didn't have a problem getting anything boarded up or a lot being cleaned up, and I have to say, thank you for putting this in because I don't think we should have ever lost Redup. It, you see, without Redup, what we don't have being done in our neighborhoods, and I'm hoping that it would be the same, except for pulling people and not replacing them in the divisions. Maybe not all the divisions need extra people, but, you know, I look at the South, I look at the West, and I look at the North. And matter of fact.
He says the most.
When, when the state took over the point, we got one or two, what, guys? And now we're lucky.
We got more, we had more staff brought back. I mean.
Well, then you would see, all they do, all they, all they have time to do is ride around and cut the grass. They don't have time to cut around it, and a lot of places look like pigsty, and I could take you for a ride to show you exactly what's happening. So I want to thank Councilwoman Smith for putting this in. I hope nothing is excluded that was there for Redup, and I'm hoping that none of the areas are shorted with men and women. When this is done, that was the only thing that, that was tough. But when Mayor O'Connor put this in place, I thought it was excellent, and so did all the communities, and then we lost it. So if it's really Redup, let's, let's call it what it is, the Redup Committee, unless there's some reason why we can't.
You know, the name doesn't matter to me. What matters to me is the resources that are committed to do it.
Mayor O'Connor put it together, so it would be nice.
You can call it anything you want, just, just give me the resources, both money and personnel.
Not only that, but the other thing that you need are trucks in public works.
That's a resource also.
I mean, to find out that all these trucks are down and, you know, other areas have trucks, then move those to the west end and the north side and let those areas go for a while, and maybe they'll start screaming too. Thank you.
You're very much, President Kraus.
You're very much, President Cross.
Yeah, thank you very much, Councilman. Just to reiterate your point, Director, and the importance of resources. I've met with Chief of Staff Gilman several times now about our commitment this coming year to the budget. And budgets, as the mayor always says, are about our priorities. And I've made it very clear to Chief of Staff Gilman that my number one priority in this budget season is to see that these kinds of resources are allocated, that we provide the quality of life and code enforcement relief that's desperately needed throughout, throughout the city, but especially focus southwest of the river as the councilman or the councilwoman will attest. So please don't think that we are out there asking you to do something without the tools you need to do it. We all, we all see the need. This, this past election cycle was especially enlightening for me. You know, we get out there, we spend a whole lot of time, you pound the pavements, and you see things that perhaps you didn't realize really were going on. And, and we're going to find ways to correct that, but we're definitely going to find the ways to correct it by giving you the resources. Or whoever the resources they need to make certain that we can improve quality of life and code enforcement throughout the city.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I've always said you have to know what you have before you can figure out how to manage it. I mean, I could ask everybody at the table here, how many people should be in that division? I'll bet you I'd come up with, you know, nine different numbers. So you come up with the scope, how many lots? And how many times do you want to cut that lot? What other things do you want to do it? That's all calculable. And once you know that, you then can figure out what resources you need in terms of personnel, how many trucks, what tools you need, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm very willing to look forward to, we're working with you all to make this happen effectively in 2020.
Yeah, I know you will, Director. Thank you for your help.
Thanks.
Any otherbody else first round? Mr. Director, I just have a question. I want, I want to, to perhaps partner with Councilwoman Smith on this idea. Before I go down this road, I just, quick question. Is. You know, we've talked kind of privately offline about increasing the number of seasonal workers. Is this a project that would be appropriate for that vampire?
Yes, it could be.
That's what I need to know. Okay. I will, Councilwoman Smith, I also want to work with you to do this. I have some ideas I've been working on, on a separate note, that perhaps we can join forces. I think it would be helpful to you and to the Director. I think I have, we'll talk offline. I think I have some resources that I can add to this, perhaps, that would augment what we're trying to, what you're trying to do. So let's talk about it and let's work together as we always do.
I just want to add that I want to work with everyone. I want, just want to get it done. I don't care who takes, we can put all our name on it. I don't care. I just want it done. And I think working together, we're going to come up with the best possible solutions. But I do want to say, I don't care what you call it, and I told the mayor this, I don't care what you call it. It's not exactly Red Up because I wanted to go a little bit further than what Red Up did. I wanted to replant the lot so that we're not coming back, so that we are making a dent in the lots instead of doing them over and over again. And I want to make sure that we're doing the houses. And so I think that there's a little bit of difference there. But I even said to Mayor Paduto, I said, I don't care what you call it. You can call Paduto's Pickers. I don't care what you call it. I just need, I just need the program in place. He looked at me, he says, we'll do the program. We're not calling it Paduto's Pickers. So, so we're doing it. So.
Names don't, names don't matter to me. It's how much money and resources you bring into the table, and then we'll go.
Can I make?
He understood. We just want to get it done.
I think we may need longer than a week, though. Can we have a little longer hold?
Yeah.
Like maybe a month, I think would be enough time to get this done and get all the pieces in place.
I said a week before, but I didn't realize it was my legislation. I don't have my glasses on, so I don't know what we're doing.
Can we entertain, I think for weeks, I think entertain, I will accept the motion to hold for four weeks?
Motion to hold for four weeks.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Thanks, Director.
Our office will call a meeting for that.
Bill nineteen sixty-one, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works to enter into a professional services agreement between the city and A T C Group Services L L C for architectural and engineering design services related to the storm water management and renovation of the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police firing range at a cost not to exceed three hundred sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars.
Need a motion, Ms. Smith?
Motion to approve.
Your second. Any conversation? No conversation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Next bill, please.
Bill nineteen sixty-two, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works to enter into a professional services agreement between the city and Buckheart Horn Architects for architectural and engineering design services related to the renovation of the former Thaddeus Stevens School for use by the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police Special Deployment Division for the not to exceed amount of nine hundred seventy-three thousand, five hundred ninety-five dollars and twenty-two cents.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve, and I'm so excited.
Second.
Any conversation? No conversation?
I just want to thank the administration for making sure that they made this a priority for our district. And I mean, with their help, we were able to repurpose all the closed schools in District Two. So, thank you.
Good job.
And the U R A, too.
Any other conversation? No conversation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Next bill, please.
Bill nineteen sixty-three, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement with Duquesne Light Company in order to erect and installing use in an underground electrical system and associated apparatus upon the city's property at the forestry division on Stanton Avenue in Highland Park for the purpose of electrical and or telecommunications services.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Your second.
Second.
Any conversation? Ms. Smith?
I'll tell Tower now.
I'll defer.
Ms. Harris?
Yes. Is this what Duquesne Light had underneath East Commons?
Is it what they have under East Commons?
Is it the same?
No, I do not believe it's the same transmission line. It's a different, it's, it is a, it is an enhanced transmission line. As you know, if you don't know, coming up from Washington Boulevard, across the valley, they already have a major lines coming up through forestry. This is to enhance that for both city operations and the residents of the city. So they do have to tinge through some green space on the forestry property, Highland Park property, to take it out onto Stanton Avenue. But we've met with them. And so this is, there's already an existing electrical line there, but this is not like the line that's in the, in Allegheny Commons Park.
Well, that's moved now. That's why I was asking that question.
That's a major transmission line.
Yeah, we had that moved out of the park.
Oh, good. Yeah, scary. But no, this is to enhance what's already going through forestry for electrical and telecommunications improvements. For both the city will benefit from it, but also the residents of the city will benefit too.
Thank you.
Any other conversation? No conversation. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Next bill, please.
Bill nineteen sixty-four, resolution granting unto Michael Johnson his successors and assigns a privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use his own costs and expense to exterior steel trellis structures at the Presides Garden Restaurant in the Tenth Ward, Seventh Council District.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Your second.
Second.
Any conversation? It's Miss, it's Gross's district. It's, it's an Asian restaurant that I've been to.
Is she, is she okay with that?
I don't know. Do you want to just hold it? I don't know.
Is that why you're here, Director?
Yep.
Is anyone here for this?
My question would be, is it in the public right of way?
I think we should hold it for, motion to hold one week.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Next bill, please.
Bill nineteen sixty-five, resolution authorizing the mayor of the city and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into an agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development Multi-Module Transportation Fund Program. Should the grant be awarded by D C E D to provide funding for the South Twenty-first Street Complete Green Street Project in the event the grant is awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed two million, fifty-two thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Your second. Any conversation? No conversation. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Next bill, please.
Bill nineteen sixty-seven, resolution amending resolution three oh one in connection with Penn Avenue Reconstruction Phase Two Project to increase the funding amount from seven hundred and thirty-two thousand, six hundred, twenty-six dollars and sixty-one cents and alter the funding source, now being further amended to increase the funding to accommodate a letter of amendment to the reimbursement agreement amount not to exceed seven hundred thirty-eight thousand, six hundred, twenty-six dollars and sixty-one cents.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Your second.
Second.
Any conversation? No conversation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Just me.
Aye.
Next bill, please.
Bill nineteen sixty-eight, resolution amending and supplementing resolution number forty to add further budget authority for a letter of amendment to the original reimbursement agreement not to exceed a total of nine hundred sixty-seven thousand, forty-four dollars and thirty, and three cents.
I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Your second. Ms. Harris?
Yes. Where are we?
We are in the, we are in page eight, last bill, page eight. About agreements with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for the Charles Anderson Bridge. Is anyone here for that? You're here, Mr. Director? Huh? Yes, we need you. Ms. Harris has the floor, has the table.
Which bridge is the Charles Anderson Bridge?
This is the bridge that carries Boulevard of the Allies over Shuntley Park.
Oh, okay.
All right. Any other conversation?
My, Corrie Narix, the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure.
Okay. And we're asking for funds to help us with that?
Yeah, this is a bridge that needs maintenance, as so many in our city. And so this is part of the transportation improvement program. So there's substantial funds coming from the state and federal programs to maintain this bridge.
I don't know if you seen the news last night, but Shadlin Avenue Bridge, they showed where you can see straight down and the blocks of concrete that are falling off of it. Also, the, what do you call it, the East Street Bridge or the Charles Street Bridge, Swindell Bridge?
Yes, Swindell is another bridge.
That is another one that you can, that pieces of concrete are falling. We have two seventy, five seventy-nine going through there in East Street, right below it. And you can just see going over the sidewalk and the street, and they're covering the holes up. But has anybody checked the structure on either one of those bridges?
Yes, we have regular bridge inspections as required by the state that are happening on, on those very large bridges, particularly Swindell, which is a very high bridge as well.
I'd like to see both, both of the inspections on both those bridges.
We can provide those inspection reports. Those are done on a, on a every six month basis. And Swindell is in our bridge maintenance program, so that is upcoming.
It hasn't been really what you could maintain, other than sticking asphalt in the holes.
Needs substantial maintenance. Yes, it does.
Right. Thank you.
Any other conversation? No conversation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That takes us to the front of the agenda, which is the. Which is the Finance and Law Committee, which I have in the chair. We have a new paper.
Bill nineteen thirty-five, resolution further amending resolution number eight sixty-three by reducing and increasing various line items funded from the C D B G Grant, Emergency Solutions Grant, Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS Program, and Home Investment Partnership.
There a motion?
Motion to approve.
Your second.
Second.
Conversation. Ms. Harris?
What are we doing here?
We're on the Land Use and Economic Development Committee.
She wants to know what we're doing in the committee.
I thought we were on Reverend Burgess's.
We are. Finance, we're in. Page one, first bill. I don't know if anyone's here to, yes, there is someone here. If you would please come forward. Ms. Harris has some concerns.
Hi, good morning. Welcome. David Hutchinson, Assistant Director of Capital and Asset Management.
Whitney Fessner, with the Senior Manager of Community Development.
Okay.
Sure. So this piece reflects changes that have been made to our allocation. When we're making the twenty nineteen budget, back in twenty eighteen, we used estimated numbers. We actually got higher allocations for all three programs, C D B G, Community Development Block Grants, Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS, and our Emergency Solutions Grant. So this resolution reflects those increases.
Okay, so you're, you're saying because we received more in C D B G dollars that we're adding to these?
Correct.
Okay. How much more did we receive than what they thought we were going to receive?
For C D B G, I believe it was around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. For E S G, I want to say it was thirty-two thousand, and then for H A W A, it was a hundred and twenty-three thousand.
I'm just looking for the total extra money that came in this year.
Around five hundred thousand, I mean, combined.
Yeah, it's program specific or restricted in how we can spend it, but yeah, combined, it's probably around five hundred thousand.
Yeah, I thought we heard two million.
Maybe we should ask Finance that question.
Well, we actually deal with HUD and do the budgeting for this money. We started with thirteen five in the, in the, in the budget that was passed in December. And then we don't get our final allocation until the spring from HUD. And so we got those final numbers back. I think it was thirteen, eight hundred and forty-some thousand dollars. Was our new, was our new number for C D B G.
So it would only be three hundred and some dollars extra?
Three hundred thousand.
Thousand, I'm sorry. Okay.
Any other conversation? No conversation. No other conversation. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Next bill, please.
Bill nineteen thirty-six, resolution authorizing in agreement with various community organization for operational administrative expenses, maintenance, purchase of equipment and or rehabilitation of neighborhood facilities on behalf of the residents of the city at a cost not to exceed one million, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Conversation. Ms. Harris?
Yeah, how much is I going to the north side and where?
This is your unspecified local option allocation? So this, this reflects what we had in the HUD plan or, you know, action plan that went in front of the public earlier this summer. So this is, this is your U L O. So seventy thousand, I think, for each district, and then the mayor had three hundred thousand.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, C D B G.
Any other conversation? No conversation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you very much. The next ten bills you can read together.
Bill nineteen thirty-seven, resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of Diapolonia Engineering Division of Ground Technology in an amount not to exceed eleven thousand, one hundred and forty-one dollars and forty-one cents for professional services regarding land sale matters. Bill number nineteen thirty-eight, resolution amending resolution number two fifty-three by increasing the total cost of one hundred and ten thousand dollars to two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Bill number nineteen thirty-nine, resolution amending resolution six sixty-three authorizing the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with McGrell and Associates by increasing the total cost from sixty thousand dollars to ninety thousand dollars. Bill number nineteen forty, resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in the amount of eight thousand, six hundred, twenty-two dollars and fifty cents to Kittleson L L C for professional services in relation to a lawsuit filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill number nineteen forty-one, resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of Coian and Grisby in an amount not to exceed four thousand, six hundred, eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents for professional services in connection with an employment matter. Bill number nineteen forty-two, resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in the amount of five thousand, nine hundred, seventy-four dollars and ten cents to Dicky, McCamey, and Keel Coat for the professional legal services in relation to police matters. Bill number nineteen forty-three, resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in the amount of twenty-two thousand dollars to Robert A. Creo for arbitration services rendered in connection with Act One Eleven Interest Arbitration. Bill number nineteen forty-four, resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of Farrell and Reisinger in an amount not to exceed eighteen thousand, two hundred, forty-one dollars for professional legal services regarding a police matter. Bill number nineteen forty-five, resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in the total sum of six thousand, seven hundred, fifty-two dollars and thirty-two cents to Thomas Thomason Heffer for professional legal services in connection with a police matter. Bill number nineteen forty-six, resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of Spillman Thomason Battle in an amount not to exceed three thousand, four hundred, ninety-four dollars and sixty-five cents for professional legal services regarding a police matter.
Motion to hold for executive session.
Second.
We can't, I can't entertain that motion quite yet. And so we're going to sort of pause for just a second. And we will, we will just take a pause for a moment.
Four.
There's only four of us.
Who walked out?
Have a good, have a good grade school education. I can count to five. All right, now I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to hold for executive session.
Need a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Bills are held. We have two bills at the end of the committee that can be read together.
Bill nineteen eighty, resolution further amending and supplementing resolution number eight fifty-five by transferring five thousand dollars from District Six Neighborhood Initiative to the Housing Authority of the City for Gym Equipment and a Fitness Mentoring Program at Allegheny Dwellings within City Council District Six Neighborhood Needs.
Next.
Uh, nineteen eighty-one, sorry. Resolution further amending resolution number four ninety-three by transferring five thousand dollars from District Six Neighborhood Initiative to the Housing Authority of the City, Allegheny Dwellings, in Council District Six Neighborhood Needs. Total cost of all projects is not to exceed one hundred thirty thousand, eight hundred, two dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Need a second. No conversation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Invoices are on the table. Need a motion for the invoices? Need a second?
Second.
Any conversation about the invoices? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. There are no interdepartmental transfer. There is P cards approval. P cards are on the table. Need a motion for the P cards.
Motion to approve.
Need a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, I believe that takes us to Land Use and Economic Development. No, we already, did we do that yet? No, I believe that's, it takes us to Land Use Economic Development Committee. Ms. Gross is the chair. That takes us to page nine on your agenda, nineteen forty-nine, I believe.
Bill nineteen forty-eight, ordinance amended and supplemented the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances at Title Six graffiti by amending the existing language of section six twenty oh six to replace the Bureau of Building Inspection with the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections to allow the Bureau of Police to prepare and send notices and to clarify the process for removing publicly visible graffiti located on private properties.
I have a request, administration, to hold for one week. Can I have such a motion?
Sure, hold for one week.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Next bill, please.
Bill nineteen forty-nine, resolution providing for an agreement with the Jewish Healthcare Foundation to provide administration and operating expenses, housing and housing-related supportive services to persons with H I V AIDS and their families at a total cost not to exceed one million, seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars.
Need a motion?
To approve.
Need a second?
Second.
Any conversation? No conversation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, next bill, please.
Bill nineteen fifty, resolution providing for an agreement with the Urban League of Pittsburgh for the implementation and administration of the Housing Counseling Program and related costs in an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Need a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Nobody seconded it. Nobody seconded it. Second.
I thought, I thought somebody did. I thought Mr. Lovell did. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. All right, the next three bills can be read together? Those opposed, nay. All right. The next three bills can be read together.
Bill 1951, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX Zone in Article One, Section 90203 Zoning Map by changing from P. Parks to EMI Educational Medical Institutional One Parcel near the intersection of Fuse Street and Hammershaw Drive.
All three.
Okay, I'm sorry. Bill 1952, resolution approving and updated institutional master plan under the Pittsburgh Code Title IX Zone in Article Two and Article Seven for Carnegie Mellon University Institutional Master Plan dated July 30, 2019 on property zone EMI District 14, Ward, Council District Eight. Bill number 1953, resolution providing for the designation as a historic structure under Title XI of the Code of Ordinances that certain structure known as Heat Side Cottage located at 416 Katama Street in the Fineview Neighborhood in the 25th Ward of the city.
All three need to be held for a public hearing. Need a motion?
Motion to hold all three for cable cast public hearing.
Do you have a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right. That exhausts the Land Use and Economic, we have.
No, no.
Yes, we exhaust that committee. We do have a new paper under Urban Recreation Committee. Uh, Mr. Cog here is the chair. We have a new paper.
Bill 1977, resolution naming the Stratmore Street Park as Andrew Joseph Kakuruta Park.
Need a motion to hold for public hearing?
Motion to hold for public hearing.
Do you have a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right. That takes us to the last page, I believe, page 11 in the Government Affairs Committee. Mr. Connor is the chair. We have a new paper.
Bill 1955, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for the East Liberty Site Preparation Contract, Liberty Green, located at 155 Larimer Avenue.
Need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Do you have a second?
Second.
I'm in favor of this project. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Next bill, please.
Bill 1956, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for 2554 Smallman Street.
Need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Do you have a second?
Is this, in Councilwoman Gross, is she okay with this?
This would be.
It's in her district. Does anyone know she, her.
I don't know, but.
Not had any communication with the councilwoman.
Is anyone here for the project?
Uh, so is the next one.
Next two are hers?
Uh, the 56 and 57 are the councilwoman's.
Uh, let's read them both. Let's hold them both.
Okay.
Yeah.
Bill 1957, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for 23rd and Railroad, 23rd Street and Railroad Street.
Need a motion.
Motion to hold 1956, 1957 for one week.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Next bill, please.
Bill 1958, resolution adopting the plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for the AJ Palumbo Center Edition Project, which will involve major interior renovations and the building's footprint enlargement. The building address is 1304 Forbes Avenue.
Need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any conversation? No conversation? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Um, I believe we can read both the next two together, I think, but.
Bill 1959, resolution providing for the execution of a corporation agreement with the URA for the performance of certain work in connection with the 2019-2020 CDBG Grant Program and providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $4,558,960, Council District All. Bill number 1960, resolution authorizing a corporation agreement with the URA designating URA as the city's agent for administration of the 2019-2020 Home Investment Partnership Program, Council District All.
Need a motion, Mr. Lavell.
Motion to approve.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Lavell, you have the table.
These were our, these were our annual bills to allow for the CDBG dollars to move as well as the, for the URA to be the carrier for the home dollars. It's an annual bill.
Yeah, all right. Any other conversation? Ms. Harris.
Okay, the whole team. Good morning.
Welcome.
Wow.
Is this the first time you're at the table?
Are you ready for me?
Wait, let me just say, we're so excited to have you at the table for the first time as the acting director.
Thank you.
Hopefully soon director.
We'll be kind today.
I imagine that you don't know what all is yet correct with these dollars.
Breakdown.
Introduce yourself.
By Council.
De'Amonte Walker, Deputy Director for the URA, also serving as the interim Executive Director.
Tom Cummings, Director of Housing Development.
David Geiger, Government Affairs Officer.
Matthew Santiago, Associate Counsel, URA.
So your question was?
Uh, do you know what is going to be done with these dollars in each district yet or no?
We do not know what will be done in each district.
But you do know what has been done with last year's dollars, correct?
Yes.
I would like to see a copy of that.
We can get that.
I appreciate that. On both.
Yep.
Okay.
Any other conversation?
Thank you. Well, will the projects come before us? I'm sorry.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you. Will the projects come before us, um, that you are working on in the future? Before, will they come to each council member if it's in our district?
I believe so. I believe that the staff will coordinate with your office regarding projects that we think are emerging in the district.
Okay.
Yeah, Councilwoman, I send emails to your office whenever.
You do, you do. You're really good.
Projects in your district, so I will continue to do that.
To argue against you sometimes, but you're really good. Thank you.
No problem.
Any other conversation? See, no conversation. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Huh? Opposed, nay.
Call a feast today, huh?
Let's try this again. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. All right. Thank you very much. Both positive recommendations.
Thank you, Ben.
Again, thank you for your work. Um, I didn't realize that, I didn't, I was going through all these, but I didn't realize that you were here for the last bill of the day. Also, I moved you up. All right, so, um, that exhausts our agenda, I believe. I do have some announcements. Next Tuesday, September 10th at 3 o'clock, council will hold a cable cast public hearing on Bill 2019 to 1910 and 1911 relative to street vacations in the 8th Ward, 9th Council District. And on Wednesday, September 11th at 1:30, council will hold a cable cast post-agenda relative to Parks, Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy, Conservancy partnership with the city of Pittsburgh. All right, now, motions in relation to illusions, starting with Councilwoman Smith.
Thank you. So I just want to, um, again, um, mention that the post-agenda next week that is regarding Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy and, um, the agreement with the city and also with everyone knowing that the tax and, and the things that they're working on is coming up. We want to make sure that we're getting information to people so they know, um, what to expect and what this, what this effort really includes. And, um, so hopefully we'll get some information to people. But I want to thank Ms. Brown's grandchildren yesterday for sending me a, um, birthday wish and a little, the little chick that they got me. So I just want to thank their, thank them for that because they do come in here sometimes